Actually, I was talking about actually do and then when I said so my motion is.
I am waiting, I am waiting, stop, everybody stop. First of all, you address your center chair. Second of all, this is a merit, this is an issue with the minutes. We happen to have this issue every once in a while. And I'm going to talk about it right now. We have this, every time, there's a motion that runs on for a day and a half. That's why, every time we get a long motion, the guy that sits in the center chair, yours truly, always says, wait, stop. Make a clear and concise motion. A short motion. Not a motion that rumbles on, make a short motion. That's why I say that. Because every time you get a long motion, that runs a long time, there gets some confusion. Now, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have a long time conversation about that tonight. We're talking about the minutes. Not hours, minutes. Okay. So the motion on the floor is to adopt the minutes. Is there, is there a motion to amend the minutes?
I made the motion to amend the minutes.
There are second call in another house. Second. To amend the minutes. On the amendment motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Man, quick.
Alderman DeAndrea.
Aye.
Alderman Longham.
Aye.
Alderman Hanneman. Aye. Alderman Barber.
No.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye. Motion carries, four ayes, one no. So let's all agree here, that we're gonna keep our motions to amend the whole length from here on out. So that we don't have this argument, that we don't have this sending audio clips back and forth. So we can clarify a motion that was made and passed. Okay?
Don't interrupt me, and I don't want to interrupt me three times.
And you just interrupted me once. Now, on the motion to adopt as amended, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye. No. No.
Man, quick.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
May.
Alderman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Longham.
Aye.
Alderman DeAndrea.
Aye.
Motion carries, four ayes, one no. Move on to hearings, no hearings in the organizational business, no letters of admissions. I will make an offer that we go around a committee to hold on the 31st, so by order. Uh, reports to recommendations. We do have a lot of project updates for ballpark timing. Free no bandito. Pardon me? Free no bandito.
Sorry, it came down.
The president is here from high visitors to give us an update on the ballpark.
Thank you, Kevin Hassel. Have they heard you, man?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna start with, um, just keep the same format, that's okay, we'll start the infrastructure. Uh, so the north end, some retention ponds are built, uh, to rock grade, um, certified. Um, we're still, I don't know if we have any more issues, but the self pile retention, um, pond is still outstanding, and I know that that's a kind of a block to getting occupancy for, um, the first man out building. Have that done next year. Uh, storm is done, waiting on final inspection, water's done, same thing. Uh, the access maintenance roads, um, are being reworked between the city and, or between county and Foley. And, um, there was an email actually sent today to Mayor Klein in regards to that. Uh, there are some maintenance issues that BTC has not been keeping up the power on, primarily mowing. Um, I think it was just too kind of dispresent first. Um, so we've got, um, we'll be mowing all of the, uh, shared islands on Friday. Let's see, the north, north ballpark drive, ninety percent done through the punch list. Uh, the south, um, south ballpark drive is a little finicky, there's some debate between, I would say Mandel and the city at one, we should put the last if we later on. So we're still gonna, I think, have that, that dialogue in the south side. Unless there isn't a dialogue about. Um, Old Rumus is still outstanding, um. So that's unhold until, uh, the city regrades the dish. I mean, let's just jump in, I'm, I'm a small fan of this. Um, and then the city is also not considering that, maybe if it happens, I just, just found out, so.
I don't have any information.
Okay. Uh, let's see here. Landscape plan, um, still is waiting on city approval, I know this a few months ago. Um, we do have a number of, uh, trees, uh, that have failed that are, that are under warranty that were kind of in debate with the landscaper. And there were some issues with the burn, the burn on the, uh, towards Hawthorne that is not mowed. Again, these are part of our ready to schedule. Mowing. So that's the infrastructure, let's keep looking along, and you guys can ask questions at the end. New Perspective Senior Living is open, um, we've prepared very well, they're at about sixty percent occupancy. Um, it's actually, you know, one of the better lease ups, uh, in all of New Perspective Senior Living. Um, so the trend is to apply that is, but, uh, it's, it's above expectations, that's good news. Villable Village, so on the, on the south side right now, um, all more good news. Uh, the model unit, um, will open next week with hard hat tours starting. Uh, we've already got a few leases. The clubhouse is, uh, set to be opened September 1st. Um, as a reminder before, which is the first building, expected and is unscheduled to be opened by November 1st. Um, again, all ahead of schedule. In terms of budget for what it's worth, it's good, it's not great, um, there's some bad soils that are still on budget, but it's, uh, you know, thank goodness we put that in contingency. So all in all, we plan on, uh, the entire, which we made, completing the apartments. We've got a woman that's actually taking, her name's Riley, that's doing all the lease ups, she's actually renting space out of, obviously, right now. Um, we've got, uh, marketing going on, it's turned to marketing, marketing at the stadium, the commercials. And then you guys should be seeing a, uh, some signage plans, um, that enter in on the south side, relatively sure, and I think they're really well done. Staying on the south side, R1, M1, uh, there's been no movement on that, so the R1, M1, as a reminder, R1 is retail, M1 was personal retail apartments. It's just, in this market, in the COVID market, there's just, you know, there's no people interested, but no one's, no one's really willing to do anything right now. Not half across the street, the north side, the entertainment district. Office is a hundred percent, um, occupied, uh, full of engineering, uh, build out is about complete. They should be moving in, uh, in September. Uh, we've got our coffee shop, uh, that's called Blend, is, uh, eighty percent built out. Um, it's, uh, again, going to Marvinville, Marvinville, it's a, uh, the reason for calling it Blend is it's coffee during the day, cocktails anyway. Pretty interesting concept. And then we have Axos, who's temporarily occupying, next, what? Would you prefer them in the morning? Uh, did I ask for a permit?
No.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, uh, and then Axos, which is occupying as a physical therapy, so as a reminder, they moved to Reformans Village. When that opens, and then we've got a number of candidates that we're talking to now, but the office building's terrific. Uh, Reformans Village, um, actually, we changed the name, it's the MASH Reformans Center now. Uh, you know, I had a schedule, uh, looking for a February start date, uh, it's about seventy percent leased up. We have still, uh, not announced to be fitness centers, I don't believe, um, they prefer not to have that announced yet. Um, but, uh, we are, fitness center being there as well. Um, the one, oh, the yellow flag is the golf, um, I, I, we had all the financing set up, and COVID hit, uh, so golf, sort of, it's idle. Um, so we're talking to, already pulled the funding population permits, uh, but the financing, that structure on that is, is not a good structure for us. There's not a lot of, sort of anxious that, um, participants in that segment of the business probably goes away. So, um, we're holding, uh, spring construction, uh, we don't think it's going to be able to shovel around here. Or winter, on the weekends that we're giving to us. So that's, I would say, the one yellow flag of, um, of all per commons. Stadium, uh, we were both grateful and fortunate to have Milton Play, you guys have been maybe in tabs on outward second place. Tonight, we got sixteen series against Flintback, who's in first, so we'll be fun next six days. Uh, signed a guy to the Pirates, um, it's in Dillard, if you've heard that new pitch, uh, so that really puts, was a neat thing, so he's been on the radio and TV, um, advertising a place. Um, uh, Milky Way continues to be, is not as successful, uh, as in the beginning, I think that's in part, that's saturation of market, um, in part, just summer activities. Starting to pick up again, um, we're still really bullish about it. Um, and then we've had, uh, a number of, um, really strong corporate events come to the table. We've got a, um, a graduate, we did a graduation, a number of corporate events, better than a big one, in, for more two weeks from now. Where, uh, the vice president, the next day, so we'll be the speaker, so that'll be interesting, fun. I can't read my last, you want there? Uh, group op, no movement, um, we're probably going to move away from the person that's, that's out there pitching that. I don't know if the concept or the sales team, um, may have to, to do something different than a group op, but, uh, we're not getting, you know, what we were hoping for. A hotel is drawing the way to spring, sorry, that we moved from LOI to, uh, formal de-licenses. Um, again, as a reminder, that's a holiday express this week. And then the last point, uh, if you guys have any attention to Milwaukee County, they did a, um, um, a, they had a meeting, uh, in regards to doing a sound study that they approved, um, but we actually, that is pending by J, which ours has gone out. So that will be something that we'll have to, I think, tackle together, um, when, you know, when it's become urgent, uh, or, or just a, a sound study that we'll be, we'll be, we'll be. We're not concerned about it, um, but it's something that I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of. So without further ado, I guess I'll turn to you guys and ask any questions. I know you do.
Questions?
Well, nice to have a comment, uh, thank you, working again, for giving these updates, um, I know I get some calls. No, I haven't had calls in a while, there's any noise involved, there's never any coming in yearly, and I have normally my phone would pull up from this, but I haven't had anything in three weeks, four days, so.
So, uh, this slowed down significantly, there was one, maybe last weekend, uh, that popped like, popped like six thirty in the morning there, um, everywhere. Um, I said, there's no way to wake it any quicker than six thirty, and that we did. So, uh, we addressed that, it's early, they, uh, they turned it over here, and they, I heard a DJ, uh, we just didn't have it on radar, so. Other than that, we, there's one or two neighbors, uh, that, you know, I've given my personal contact info, it will say, here's a turn to, hear, um, noises, and then we'll kind of work to adjust it. I mean, it's, it's finicky because, uh, and that kind of stuff, so this particular neighbor, um, has been relatively vocal, um, I think it's been a very appreciative work that we've been doing to, to, uh, adjust it some.
Thank you.
Alderman. Just real quick, uh, we only expect that I had this work, um, and I know that you were working on that, and then you're putting it out now, and now I think, could match with, and it's, uh, um, and I know that you're gonna be working on that, being mentioned that you're. Um, something that I'm hoping that you can have conversations with our finance director. Uh, but with the delays and the overall, uh, you're gonna be possibly bouncing up against the wall based on commitment and increment and taxation. So, if you're not aware of it, I would expect that you and your finance people need to sit with Paul, and, uh, make sure that we start checking all that out, because we did have a discussion in finance, uh, WTB stuff.
Yeah, I love it, I can actually be very modeling, right now, while it's, it's, we're currently having, um, I know the new assassins came, came in, we had run numbers, I know that the office building came in, I think we'll be, excited to run half analysis. The golf, which is a twenty-five million dollar build out, that's the one thing. We're hoping to get in summer, fall, uh, a, a six-month delay doesn't materially affect the analysis. Um, we can tell that if there's different agents, you guys have been, be more than happy to. You can see on the.
Well, Mike, I, I asked if you, you would reach out with Paul. I would recommend that you reach out with Paul.
Absolutely, yep.
And make sure that your numbers and his numbers are somewhat in sync. Because it appears that we might be off a little bit.
Yep.
Okay? I just want to make sure there's no surprises.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I mean, the only surprise, I would say, is how the, I don't think anybody's located, uh, you know, shut down like the markets and that kind of stuff, so, I mean, that aside, I still, I still think we're, you know, we're striking distance, but I was certainly, me with it, because we've got contractual, and first, will you answer?
That's all I'm asking.
You got it.
I don't want you to be surprised. It goes for partners.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, and there are probably with our involvement, all three of you, who, who, next to us. Um, I didn't get a call from, uh, Greenfield's mayor, Mike Maitzke, who's, uh, who, Greenfield had their graduation at, um, on the field.
Good, I'll mark it.
Uh, that's correct, I'm sorry, Marquette High, uh, his daughter, and he grew up at Marquette High. She was a phenomenal.
Yeah, that's, that's a pretty.
Well, thanks, Paul, I was just saying.
Marquette High's an all-boy school.
It was his son. I don't, look at that, I don't like that, come on. Whatever sex his child is that goes to Marquette High, had a phenomenal vent there, and it went great and speedy, extends his compliments to you.
Good.
I think that would add its own. So, anything else for?
Okay. Thanks, you're kind of a shit.
Well, let's get him first, please, okay?
All right, panel.
Uh, T2, is, uh, resolution for our twenty-twenty fire station alerting system. It's, uh, twenty-four thousand eight hundred and nineteen thousand seven cents to, in interval, building's second. I was in favor of the motion.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Most, there's any chief you want to add?
Yeah, I just want to thank Peggy and Mike for helping me getting this product back on track, and tomorrow, so, great work.
And why are they going to start?
Um, I don't know, well, I've been in contact with them, it seems to be, and Sean's looking forward to a good night's sleep.
There you go. This is a pity, but this will help, to help Marquette High. Thank you. Uh, T3, page seventeen, is harnessing amount fifteen, that most three, fifteen S three, bold four one five, if you can correct. Val's orders, uh, show up for building experience, change the permit, um, sign it, or have that humanity. We need two, both, two motions here, a motion determining the proposed, uh, the, the.
Mayor, I made the motion to, uh, determine a minor amendment.
There's a second. Alderman Hammond. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, second is to.
Second motion.
To adopt the order. Next. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Um, we thought you could make sure that, 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 one comment that I made, Mike mentioned that they take a look at the, uh, graphics on the side of the building, of the refrigerator, and they help you, and, uh, they take a look at it. Officer Council's, uh, information, they have some graphics on the side of the building with some half-bagged furniture and appliances. I thought that looked not really real good, so they're gonna take a look at it. Okay, T4, on page thirty-five. High and Purple Department Transportation for Lover's Lane. Uh, we have a motion for staff to form west side on preference, um, Mr. City Engineer, what do you want?
So if you recall the conversation on July twenty-first, we had a whole series of things we made preferences to, to the DOT. One issue which we decided to survey in the affected residents, or affected property owners, as you say, was, uh, the frontage drone on the east side between Herta and Phyllis. We sent out the survey, and we got the four responses. Of the four responses, oh, one wanted to keep it two-way, uh, the other, uh, four, I'm sorry, the other three. I, wait, see, see, five responses, I believe it was one, keep it two-way, and, uh, four responses wanted to make it one-way with northbound. So, again, it sits at a vote per se, and, and DOT will look at all the studies, but they are interested in, in your considerations, so. Uh, I would suggest to you that perhaps they can, in a light, lock that up quick.
Did the fire department?
I did not ask the fire department.
So, um, so, do we need an option to go for option A, or do we?
Well, I, I think, based on your responses, uh, option A would be to, um, tell a list on your preferences, make it one-way, which, which lessens the take in the driveway, that, you know, if you wanted to do, or make it a one-way work.
And your gradual changes.
I think that's it.
Let's not do that again. Wait on, wait on. Let's be quick. Let's, let's quick with this option A stuff. Do you think the motion, do you recommend the west side, or the north, um, one-way? Hold on, read it. You need to have it written on. Okay, motion to direct staff to the four west sides, on preference to one-way, comma, northbound, for the frontage road along South Lover's Lane. Here on US forty-five, slash state nine hundred, here from West Hurdle Place to South Phyllis Lane. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify, I think.
Aye.
Any vote? Motion carries. T5, there's a revised, uh, action sheet, as opposed, or, uh, allow it to be adopted. Consider resolution, uh, to, for conservation, each month, for the mayor on West Grand Road. Uh, motion's approved. There's a second?
Second.
Discussion? Very nice, all those in favor, signify, it's a, aye?
Aye.
Any vote? Any vote? I hope this is fair.
But what?
It's very deep. Okay, then who you talk?
I, well, my, I did.
Just a second.
I just got the detail on this, uh, basically, I, uh, for, I understood that the, uh, issue was, you know, snowmobile television because it's proximate, uh, to a snowmobile, a new snowmobile trail. But now that my first look at this handout, there, and see that's real tighter, all of the, all the vehicles, or any other type of border vehicles, etc., wants to be there. I don't know, so, not my realm, but, just, that's all I know.
T6.
Mayor?
Alderman Longham.
Could we have some clarification on that, because it was, I thought the intent was just to remove the snowmobile issue. Is that not, what, what's going on?
Well, I know the young master there would probably like to zoom around, uh, make a few years.
I'm fine, I just want to make sure that we don't have any questions, and we have to look at the paint later or anything. Thank you.
T6, page forty-one, resolution to answer check card number one, if you want to. All those in favor, most, you, and most, any ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, yeah, so, any opposed? Motion carries, T6, resolution figure number one, the one sec. Paying on the nine thousand thirty dollars for the, uh, odor protection project. Alderman Nelson. Uh, motion to adopt or approve, uh, option A, option A. I read it. And there is no option B. There is no B, well, there's a B, we're, we're back to stay out. Probably go in the bottom, bottom part, and option A, my motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Who even have you on the phone? Barber, the phone? We don't say barber. T7, page fifty-three, is resolution to go into a staff department, and that's what's been after all, and you make this report. Their motion to adopt the resolution. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, money?
Yeah?
Say aye.
I did, aye.
Alderman Longham.
Aye.
Motion carries. T8, page sixty-nine, there's margins, same on orders twenty-three ninety, thousand and eighty, to appropriate, uh, sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty dollars for police software. Appropriate to nine-month shovel. Second.
Second.
Uh, Chris and, uh, Alderman Nelson, read it to it. Uh, that's what.
You're, are you on, um, G8 with the twenty-six thousand dollars?
G8 is twenty-six thousand nine hundred.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, Mr. Rosenberg there, because the amount is not actually that. Um, if you, if you look at the resolution, the motion and the resolution don't go together. The resolution talks about splitting up between the grants, and having a contingency fund difference, um, of the ten thousand eight hundred, and the, and so, the motion should actually have a number change, that, is, Mr. Rosenberg, mayor?
I am.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Okay.
So the alderman of the third district called me, uh, recently on this issue, and pointed out that the title of this ordinance and council action was inappropriately stated. It should be read that it's to move sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty dollars for contingency, instead of the twenty-six thousand nine hundred. But the attached resolution in section one does in fact move ten thousand eight hundred contingency, records a sixteen thousand dollar, sixteen thousand one hundred dollar resource for intergovernmental revenue, and then creates the twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollar appropriation for the police computer software.
So question?
Alderman Longham.
So, Mr. Rosenberg, would it be more accurate to say we're moving from the Campbell Outlay Fund, not the twenty-six thousand nine hundred, but, um, the only ten thousand?
That would be after it's stated, yes.
So we should amend that motion, reflect just that twenty-six nine hundred dollars, either the ten A?
I'll make that a correction for, um, and send that forward to the clerk, uh, pending council action.
Does the resolution, twenty-six nine also, you want to do the title?
Yes.
It's not a resolution.
An ordinance, ordinance, or an order. An ordinance, ordinance, ordinance. So the resolution will say ten thousand eight hundred instead of sixteen one hundred. That would be on page seven. Page, um, council action should be ten thousand eight hundred instead of sixteen one hundred. So the title of the ordinance should be, um, for the Campbell Outlay. Page seventy. Seventy.
Let's do this.
On page seventy of your packet, the ordinance title would then be, an ordinance to amend ordinance twenty nineteen, twenty-three, uh, twenty-three ninety-eight, an ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty annual budgets for the Campbell Outlay Fund to move ten thousand eight hundred dollars contingency appropriations to police software and create a grant resource for sixteen thousand one hundred thirty dollars to appropriate the nine-one-one emergency system. There would be no need for any other changes in the ordinance.
Aye. Motion to approve, second. All over the nation.
The motion, the motion reads that twenty-six nine, mayor?
Uh, in the background, second line, you've got federal grant, you transfer number fifteen thousand three ten, that's appropriate sixteen thousand one hundred. Yes, on page sixty-nine.
I know, I'm going back to my notes from the police chief. Aye. The information that I received from the police chief is that the, um, uh, the grant is for sixteen thousand one hundred thirty dollars.
You have sixteen thousand three ten.
I equated the number slightly so that if there were a change, we would have sufficient resource for it.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman, Alderman Wilhelm was correct that the motion adopted the order, adopted the ordinance to move twenty-six thousand nine hundred.
Well, that is true.
So that would have to change.
Would be better, huh?
That would be Alderman Barber, second time, Alderman Nelson.
Alderman Barber, your motion is ten thousand eight hundred.
That doesn't matter.
Second. Okay, so you know the correct motion? Number.
Alderman Danman.
Aye.
Alderman Wilhelm Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderman Danman.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carried, five eyes, no nose, one ass and no extension, so we do our text circle. Okay, move on to G nine, which is, uh, an ordinance to amend our budget. Move contingency appropriations for municipal building inspections project. Roger.
This was, uh, ordinance was created at the direction of County Council on January twenty-first, twenty-twenty council action. Um, there's no reason to make any changes to this particular recommendation.
Show mode.
Second.
All over the nation, second, tell, uh, when you roll on that map.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Danman.
Aye.
Alderman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderman Danman.
Aye.
Motion carries, five eyes, no nose, one ass and no extension, G ten, on page seventy-seven, as you just mentioned, uh, to move thirty thousand for contingency appropriations for the sixty-third vertical alignment improvement, seven thousand for the Rossin Avenue Street light.
Mr. Mayor, all over the nation. The President. Mr. Mayor, I was informed earlier today by the city engineer that this particular, uh, budget amendment is no longer needed and staff would recommend we, uh, take no action on this item.
Moving on to page eleven, I think, page eighty-one. Allows us for two options to approve Rossin. Rossin Avenue Street, Ink Lady, Franklin, nine-one-one.
I'd like to move the, uh, should I request staff review easement documents for options that could create improvements to review applicable ordinances, easement persons, or any other options staff legal counsel leave appropriate to improve this city image to return back no later than October sixth?
Can you approve this too?
Well, it would be staff, um, whoever would be appropriate to look at easements and applicable ordinances. So I think that Cali and the planning department and also the legal counsel, which would be in the city attorney office.
All right, let's go to the planning, I need you to go first. Okay. A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Staff, uh, Chris is, to put the close notes to this. I hold on, correct me if I'm wrong, um, the alderwoman is looking to get rid of the billboard and, um, he's, uh, he's, uh, so he's there. Okay. Uh, on G twelve, on page eighty-three, ordinance to amend budget for donations funded by fifteen thousand dollars for appropriations for the police equipment. My, I'm trying to get on my computer.
Did you yell at it?
Nancy yelling at you?
Aye.
Is your voice yelling at you?
No. This shouldn't be put back on, I, I'll, I'll turn off my mic.
Uh, wait a second. Uh, the chief is giving a donation for, uh, uh, from his church for about fifteen thousand dollars worth of capital improvements. So is there a motion to accept donation and, uh, good money?
The donation will be brought forward to the next county council meeting. This is just creating the appropriation to be able to spend it in council access.
Question. So.
No, and already approved it, I said.
And, 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 all those in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote.
Aye.
Well, I was.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Danman.
Aye.
Alderman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderman Danman.
Aye.
Motion carries, five eyes, no nose, one ass and no extension, thanks. Um, okay, G eighteen, report on expenses for COVID-19.
So, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, state continues to spend some expenditures against the COVID activity. The activity has declined, uh, the spending has declined considerably from where it was in the April, May, and June timeframe. Uh, through the end, in the middle of August, this general fund and other funds have spent about ninety-two thousand. That has not been covered by various grants, uh, coming through the state. If someone should have some questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, G one, uh, G fourteen, page eighty-five. Page, uh, in summary schedule, we, uh, have completed from election day November third to the day before, in one sec. So.
Motion to reschedule.
All those in favor?
Uh, aye. Aye.
Any vote? We want to be nice, all in the bar, and we're getting a motion on that.
Uh, now you're right.
Motion carried.
I don't drive.
Pass on the pump, if you're a member. Hold on to, eight, one, this one, this one, this one, this is all over the nation. All over the nation, yeah, this is a quick one. Okay, uh, first one, regarding Swiss Street, recommend approval contingent upon restriction on fifty or less people hearing music only, present on Saturdays from seven to ten P M, Sunday from one to five, and contingent upon addressing concerns from departments in writing to the city clerk's office. I will, individually or anyone who's not clear? I can, I can just go down the whole list, like a normal.
I got a question.
Oh.
I'll ask them. How are we going to determine whether they give?
Uh.
They usually never have laws.
Uh, I guess we're looking at this right now in Science Tavern, I believe that's the maximum amount anyway.
I mean, it kind of applies to all, yeah, it doesn't apply to all.
Well, we, they've agreed to it and apparently if we wish to audit them, it could be ordered by health department, under business, and they complain, which is probably just fine. That was it. All over the nation.
Um, if I may also, um, make a comment in our discussion about these particular applications, um, in conjunction with the health director, Courtney Bay. The notion is that it would actually be safer to allow them some more health tight states, uh, with fresh air moving around rather than having all of their patients in the bar next weekend. So that was, um, kind of the notion we operated under. Um, which is the guidelines that Courtney has submitted to us back on August seventh.
Okay, we may forward, landmark, approve, uh, the reminder with no food and no music. Uh, Mulligans was approved. Uh, Layman's approved, Berries approved. Uh, Hassanstein approved letter, Evans approved. Order deny, no show three times. Uh, the others are approved. All over the nation, question.
Or a clarification?
Hold on. And Mulligans, is there going to be a limit on, uh, capacity?
Um, Mulligans at this point is not only going to do their car show during the day and they don't feel they'll be into that many people, they're back one time, people will be generally circulating rather than congregating. Um, they're not going to now do their halfway to see how you stay partying.
Okay, thank you. Member, no.
Um, just want to clarify, no, remember, was not, was not that, but also subject to the fifty or less people. Um, and music only.
The, the part that I'll read in here was part of this, because they have their own hours as listed. Uh, recommend approval upon restriction of fifty people or less, hearing music only, and then I'll flip down here to the hours, uh, September fifth and sixth, noon to ten P M. And, uh, also contingent upon addressing concerns from departments in writing to the city clerk's office. Was that, because I heard, well, no music, no food, so why would they even want to sell?
And to become a new wine piece.
No. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Get ambient. All over the world.
The clerk addressed my question. No further questions.
Then, all those in favor?
Nine.
Aye. Any vote?
Aye.
That was a nine, uh, okay. Uh, all over the nation. Got you. Okay, uh, there is a revised vouchers and payroll expense, and I have on, for motion approved to follow, city vouchers, the ending date of August first, in the amount of three million, three hundred twelve thousand, two hundred twelve dollars, eight cents. And payroll dated July thirty-first, in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand, four hundred five hundred and nine seven dollars, eight cents. The payments of various payroll deductions in the amount of four hundred forty-one thousand, eighty-nine thousand, eighty-one cents, plus city magic payments. And estimated payroll for August first, estimated at three hundred ninety-five thousand. The payments of various payroll deductions, estimated at two hundred seventeen thousand, plus city magic payments. And a total of early tax transfers to American Management management in the amount of nine million dollars. So I'm over. All over the world. The numbers you were reading wasn't anything that matched this, the revised. Yours? I'm just doing what I'm told. There's revised revised? So just so, just so you all can see this. See that? When the clerk grabs this book from my hand, he goes and thinks that, that's right, I gotta cut this in your pocket. So here it is, right, so I'm just doing what I'm told. So, okay, so the last one isn't nine million, round numbers, it's nine million, five hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty. Yeah. Not right. So let's back up and try this again. Now I'm a trained broadcaster, so. So. Or we're serving. Starts out with city vouchers, I'm sure. So we're going to back up and start this again. So is there a motion to approve, follow, city vouchers within any date of August thirteenth, twenty-twenty, in the amount of one million, nine hundred, twenty-one thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars, eight seven cents? And payroll, which will have the date of August fourteenth, twenty-twenty, in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars, sixty cents? And payments of the various payroll deductions in the amount of two hundred forty-five, eight hundred seventy-three dollars and eight cents? Plus of course, city magic payment. And estimated payroll, also due August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty. Estimated by our fabulous finance department at four hundred thousand dollars. And payments on the various payroll deductions, they will also estimate at five hundred fifty thousand dollars, plus city magic payment. That would be more there. Property taxes, first ones within any date of August thirteenth, twenty-twenty, in the amount of probably nine million dollars. Approval release benefits to the miscellaneous vendors in the amount of fifty-one thousand, eight hundred six dollars, eight cents. Approval release property tax, excuse me, tax transfer from American Management management in the amount of three million, two hundred thousand dollars. And approval release tax payments in the amount of nine million, five hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Want to see about? Member.
Alderman Danman, aye.
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 Alderman Danman. Aye, Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Now that we did that twice, motion carried. Five eyes, no nose, one ass and no extension. With that, we move back. We move back to, I think, these, fifteen, or is it? There's a motion in interposed session. I think it was got, said nineteen eighty-five thousand months of C, I'm sorry, he, from, I think it was Friday. As here, for market competition, bargaining, considering terms relating to tax economy, number eight, lovely written, between City Frankel, J C Project LLC and Z S Enterprises LLC, under Spectro, we should execute the outline and call them the agreement for J C Project LLC and Z S Enterprises LLC, under Spectro, we should execute the outline, public improvements and bestie public funds and general actions in relation thereto and to exercise such development, including the terms and provisions of the development agreements for the development of the property located in the south side of West Elm Road, a privately thirty-five hundred block area where West Elm Road may extend it to the west, area consisting of approximately seventy-nine point seven acres and a re-enrolled possession in the same place. And a re-enrolled session in the same way, so after, after, I haven't discussed their names, be the project. All the one hands?
Second.
Number.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Dan.
Aye.
Alderman Wilhamp.
Aye.
Alderman Dan.
Aye. Okay, we are in full session, uh, might be first time I'm going to hang up. I think that is called a.